Good morning. It is 8:30. I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Before we start, I just would like to take a moment. Our community lost a champion last week. Retired Bill Burquist pushed all of us to be our best selves. I was a product of the dare and great programming that he implemented through my school district and the relationships that he formed, not only with those students, but with members all across our community, was something that I really admired. And as I took my first oath of office, standing right next to Bill Burquist, I really felt his passion and love of our community. And, you know, I know he was robbed from an amazing retirement from a terrible disease that, a disease that affects all of these, all of the people in this room. I know that Commissioner Campbell's mother had suffered from it and members of my family have suffered from it, and it's brutal. Our prayers are with his family, and may he and Annie rest in peace together. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, I would like to just add your very heartfelt comments. Bill was a colleague of mine for 12 years. When my wife and I moved here in 2006, Bill was one of the first ones to reach out, and he and Annie had us to their home. Their friendship was something we appreciated at that point and learned to treasure down the road. He did the same thing with Ernie Rhodes, who came from Baton Rouge to be the chief of Holly, and his wife Alice, and we had a pretty good little group there for a long time and had a lot of fun. Billy was a humble man. He didn't tell people what to do. Billy held conversations with them, and they came to solutions. And sometimes that was a little slower than the standard sheriff and chief approach to things, but it sure was a lot less harmful in the long run to the relationships he formed. And he loved this community. And the reason he loved Clay County was he loved people. And it took you about 30 seconds to figure that out when you talk to him. He was a humble, caring guy, and he did a wonderful job for this community, and he's going to be missed. And Sheriff Empting, you've got big shoes to fill. And he has set a good standard for law enforcement in this state. I've had two chiefs and a sheriff contact me last week, just asking me about what happened, and they all said the same thing, and this is from all over the state, that he is just known and respected, and he's going to be missed.
The next item this morning would be an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Have a motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Employee recognition. This morning, we'd like to recognize Melissa Young, a generalist in the Human Resources Department. Melissa has had 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Melissa's not able to join this morning. Would you like to say a few words, Darren?
So Melissa has been here for 15 years. She bounced around a little bit when she first got here to the Recorder's Office. I think she did a little stint in Highway and down at Auditor Treasure, but we finally corralled her 10 years ago into Human Resources. And she's done an absolutely fantastic job. She works on a lot of the FMLA work, the workman's comp stuff, and she does all the postings, the applications, the interviews, getting the interviews set up for us. So she's really a key component in the HR department. So I appreciate all the work that she's done for us. Thank you.
Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on anything that is not advertised in the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? There's no one here for that. Steve, have you had any correspondence in regards to this item?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the payment to bills and vouchers.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from July 19th.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
From Commissioner Ebinger, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Just an item of clarification to Mr. Leeser, Assistant County Attorney, to that piece. Reflects the motion and second?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item is the budget presentation from our Law Enforcement Department. We have Sheriff Empting this morning, our Jail Administrator Carrie, Emergency Services Gabe, and Mr. Lansum. Do we have an extra chair? Oh, you got one. Okay. All right, Sheriff?
All right, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning. Also, thanks for the kind words about Sheriff Burquist. He is definitely going to be missed, and I don't know much else to say about that at this particular time, so you guys hit the nail on the head with everything you had said about him, so thank you. We'll kind of get right into our budget here. On the revenue side for the Sheriff's Office, the Police Relief Aid, which is 01203-5276, we did increase that $10,000. Historically, it seems to be over the $300,000 mark, so we put that from $290,000 to $300,000. Moving down to the rent on buildings, which is 203-5810, that increased another $25,000 from $375,000 to $400,000. And then we also increased our miscellaneous refunds, which is 203-5830, from $100,000 to $110,000. Some of that gets to be kind of money in, money out, because that's where some of our civil process, sheriff auctions and things like that come in and come out of that. So that's why that is like that. On the expenditure side, you'll see the salaries increased, as well as your health insurance, Para, and Medicare. That's going to naturally come when the salaries increase as well. We did increase our association dues and memberships, which is 203-6243. We went from $22,000 to $24,500. And the reason for that increase is to ensure the Drug Court gets their annual donation from the Sheriff's Office. So that's the reason for that increase as well. FM Animal Hospital, 203-6292, we did decrease that from $6,500 down to $4,500. We have seen a decrease in that since COVID, since we have started to have people bring their pets to the animal hospital rather than us transporting them. There's less animals going to the animal hospital now. And then moving down to fuel, gas and oil, which is 203-6562, we did increase that as well from $115,000 to $160,000. We didn't double it. I know other departments have kind of been doubling that, but we did not double that. We're kind of hoping the fuel costs do come down over the course of the year and into next year. But it is something that we are going to be keeping an eye on as we go through this budget cycle, along with Lori and our county administrator. And if we do have to make that adjustment, we'll have to make that adjustment prior to the approval of the budget. You see a slight increase of $5,000 in equipment over $500, which is 203-6604. Reason for that is next year, we know that we have to buy 13 bulletproof or protective vests for staff. That's one of the larger years that we have to purchase those vests. Therefore, we did increase that an additional $5,000. And Gabe, what is one of those vests run, roughly?
About $1,200 per vest.
That's the reason for the increase in that line item. Those are really the only increases that we have as far as revenue and expenditures on the Sheriff's Office side. We do have some others as we move into some other line items.
Any questions on the items that the Sheriff has presented? Yes, Commissioner Gross?
What do we do with the old vests? What happens to those? Do we just throw them? Do we sell them?
No, after five years, they have to be decommissioned. We can no longer issue those out because the manufacturer warranty is no longer good on them. We do keep some if they're in somewhat decent shape, just in the event we have a new hire and we need a vest on a short-term basis. But after five years, we do have to decommission those.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaylee, are those vests donateable to overseas?
We did donate some of our older vests overseas this year to Ukraine, some that we had laying around. It was a good use for those vests, but we would not be able to donate them to any police department to use for service. But for sure, something like that, we did. Yep.
Thanks.
We did donate some to the ATF to use for a study on how they react to fire.
Sheriff, just wanted to maybe touch on your internal service.
Oh.
You made an adjustment there.
Yes, thank you. That was per Lori's request, was to increase our internal service from $450,000 to $500,000. Again, that was one that Lori suggested we do that with.
What line was that?
I'm sorry. Equipment Internal Service, that's 203-6607. When it comes to internal service and when Lori says we should do something, I kind of listen to Lori.
Smart.
We did see for our dispatch services as well, we did see a drop in our payment to dispatch. Just trying to find it where it's at here for sure before we move on to others.
251.
Excuse me?
251.
251. Steve has that right off the top of his head. It's 251. I can't find it exactly in here, but we did have a decrease in that just due to the, perfect, thank you. Due to the, am I trying to say the census finally coming through? And the North Dakota side is picking up a little bit more of that, so there's a decrease, not only in the dispatch services, but also in some of the equipment maintenance and things of that nature. Thanks, Steve. And then the other increases we had was in our medical examiner, which is 01206. First one was for autopsies, which is 6288. We increased that from $80,000 to $100,000. That is a number that's a pure guesstimate for us, because we just don't know how many desks we're going to have throughout the year, and then how many transports we'll have and things of that nature. And then along with that, travel and expense did increase as well as the individual that we contract with did raise his rates due to fuel costs and things of that nature.
Is it required that those are all processed in the state of Minnesota?
It's who we have.
Transport to the cities, correct?
Yeah, we do transport to the cities. Yeah, we go to Ramsey County Medical Examiner's Office, and we find that that is a very good service for us, as they are forensic pathologists. And if we do have a case involving a homicide or things of that nature, they do come and testify for us. So we are very happy with that service.
Good. Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Sheriff, the amount that you talked about, the decrease in the dispatch, just to go back for a minute, has the, so it's Cass County who ends up approving the final budget for dispatch, right?
Cass County? You have to repeat that, I'm sorry.
Is it, which entity ultimately determines what the final budget for dispatch is?
So right now, it's the Board of Authority that sits down and goes through the budget, and we all, right now, determine who, or we all finalize that budget through the Board of Authority, which obviously you're aware of consists of Cass, Clay County, Fargo-Moorhead, both police-fire departments, sheriff's offices. We are looking at a change in that to have more of elected officials have the overall say of the budget itself rather than the police chiefs and fire chiefs and sheriffs.
So, yeah, and I know that's where it's going when we're going to be modifying in the future. My question was, it centers around the decrease. Is the decrease, was that just established based on what was the 2022 budget? Or has the, is the decrease also considered after the 2023 budget approval? They're two different things.
Yeah, I see what you're going there. I think it's after the 2023 budget.
What is it?
Okay, 2023 budget, yeah. That would be the decrease.
Okay. Very good.
Yep. It was obviously the census came out late due to COVID and things like that, so, yep.
Sheriff, just to refresh my memory, we expect the Dispatch Center to have a budget prepared and presented by June, is it?
So the 2023 budget has been approved by the Board of Authority already, and that was approved at the May meeting.
Okay.
As we move forward, though, that will be changing for, you know, 2023 and beyond. But that budget has been approved already.
Okay, I just, I knew it always had to come in early so it could proceed any budgetary processes with the participating entities. So we are talking 2023 numbers here, and then reduced because of the census.
Yep, that is correct. And Chief Deputy Lansum did give all of the numbers to their rural communities, so they're aware that they did have a decrease as well.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yep. And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that is it for our side of it, and then we'll go to Emergency Management Corrections?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's up? Gabe?
Good morning. My budget is pretty straightforward, really no changes from last year other than I am looking for a slight increase just because of fuel prices. One thing to note, and I guess that increase is $500 is what I'm looking for, just in the fuel budget. One thing to note, though, about the state grant, the EMPG grant, the Emergency Management Performance Grant, that the state acknowledges that they are behind on payment of that. Normally, so for the 2021 fiscal year, we generally would receive payment for that probably in June or July of, like currently this summer. They're running a couple months behind. So that is approved, that is coming. And they did receive federal funding to, for the grant through '22. So next year, obviously, the 2022 fiscal year, that money has been dedicated. They just haven't established the final number on what Clay County will get. There's, they have a formula they use based off of population tax base on how they divvy that up. But so that's, if you're seeing that there isn't a revenue for 2021 yet, it should be here within a month or two. Like I said, other than that, the only thing I am seeking is an increase, just slightly for fuel prices. I was, this morning, I checked my spreadsheet, and right now I'm about, I believe, $400 above where I should be. So I think I'm going to end up probably close to $500 at the end of the year over fuel, just because of the fuel increase in fuel costs this year.
All right, questions? Carrie?
Morning, Commissioners. Okay, starting with revenue, we're not going to see much change, I don't believe, in our booking fees. Board and care of prisoners, we're going to leave that at what it was set at in 2022 and hoping that we can take on some inmates possibly. We did increase with our Huber payments, which is our work release program. We're hoping to take on other counties. What happens is a lot of people work in Fargo-Moorhead, and they want to do their time in our county so that they're closer to their work. So we have taken on a few just this year, and we're hoping to take on a few more there. So that has increased. Our phone commissions always tend to see a little bit of an increase every year, just because we're constantly adding new things for the inmates to be able to access through our texters. So we'll see an increase there. As far as our revenues or our expenditures, our salaries will be decreasing, actually, just due to the new hires that we're seeing. Therefore, we're losing, I hate to say this, but we have lost some longevity there due to retirements and so forth. So with new hires, obviously, less spending on the salaries then. Same thing then with all of our benefits, health insurance, Para, Social Security, Medicare, and so forth. Next line item, the overtime, we will probably see an increase still in that just due to the nature of our staffing right now. And if we can possibly eliminate being at minimums all the time, just because the work that's entailed over there at minimums is tough. So we're going to see probably an increase there. Professional services, we've increased that as well, just due to natural cost of living and so forth. Interest and so forth. Prisoner care, actually, let's go to prisoner board next, which is our meals. That is going to increase as well. That contract is set based on our Consumer Price Index. That was increased by 5.3% with the food costs, so that goes up naturally. Prisoner care, which is our medical, obviously, we took on a new contract, which is going to increase that quite a bit. Jail supplies has increased due to just shipping costs for the most part. Obviously, clothing and so forth has gone up.
Carrie, can I go back to 6297, the prisoner board out of county?
Oh, yes. Yep.
Certainly, that's not our desire or hope to even have anything in that line item. I know that we're trending much higher than we were in '21. I know that that's really workforce tied. You know, I hate to have, I know we're optimistic and want to have a zero in that column, but it's really hard to budget for those. You know, we're at $80,000 this year. What have you had internally discussions about putting a placeholder in that, knowing our workforce challenges aren't going to disappear?
Well, actually, our workforce has, our numbers are getting a lot better right now. We're starting to see, just with our, you know, putting out a promotional video, doing a lot of extra work that we have to do to bring people in. If, right now, we have seven people that are in training, and if those seven make it, we'll be down to seven, which I'm actually very optimistic that we're going to get there.
And so I guess the question really is, it was $92,000 in '21, and we're at $80,000, like I said, for this year. Do you feel there's room in your budget to take that big of a hit if those other pieces don't fall into place?
I believe so through our salaries then, because obviously, we're not then seeing the staffing that we wanted. Therefore, we're saving it in that area.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just to follow up, so what you are projecting is, in your salaries, is you are projecting a full crew?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So as long as you have the full crew, there would be no reason to have the boarding out?
Right, and even if we're staying steady at where we're at right now, we can still maintain what we're doing.
Great.
Commissioner Ebinger, did you have a question? Okay, thank you.
Utilities, just talking with Joe, he's a little more knowledgeable with the utilities and natural gas than I am. Both those lines have increased quite a bit due to the nature of things right now on that front. Professional services, we increased that by just a 2% interest on those items, which is our mental health contracts, our psychiatric evals, interpretive services, deaf and hard-of-hearing services. That just, those contracts naturally increase a little bit. We are on 6302, equipment and repair. We are taking a little bit of a higher jump there. What's happening is that most of our warranties for, within our building, our supplies, kitchen supplies, our laundry, that stuff is all not warrantied anymore. So we're having to take a bigger hit there with fixes and repairs. And then our uniforms, we've increased there as well, just being that we have so much, so many new staff that we're going to have to outfit. Outfitting one individual is $650 for one individual to outfit them with proper uniforms and boots. So not only that, but we want to try and take care of the people we have here as well, and getting them new boots every year and so forth, so that's the increase there. Internal service line, 6607, we have added, it looks like 22 for this year, 22677. And that's with our new tasers that we are hoping to contract with.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, on the tasers, are you, are they coming with a video feature?
These ones don't. Those ones are fairly expensive, so to try and keep the cost down there.
Refresh my memory, the jail has a pretty good system of internal video?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, very good.
So that would just be a redundancy, you don't need to worry?
It would be. It would be a nice feature. I just don't know if it's an economical feature right now.
How many tasers are you adding, and how many do you?
I'm trying to outfit every one of our staff with one, because what we're seeing happening is that shift change, which is when our clientele knows that we're switching shifts, and incidents tend to happen during that time. So what I'm trying to do is make sure that our staff is ready to go right at the moment that they're supposed to be on duty. It's just, it's a safety reason. So I'm trying to get 52 tasers. Right now, we have 32, so I'm adding 20.
And so what's the annual, what's the cost to buy one?
One single taser. The sevens are probably about $800. One single taser, the sevens are probably about 800 bucks, 800.
You not run into problems with charging if people have to share?
These ones are right. We absolutely run into that to that problem. We run into situations where some individuals like to cross draw. Therefore, they have to sit there and dig through our, all our tasers and try and find the one that fits them properly. So in order to not do that, we can outfit everybody. They have it ready to go by the time they're on shift.
So I hate to.
Nope, that's okay.
So the 22,000, is that is that the price to buy the new 20 new ones?
So, give me one sec here. With our old tasers, they have a buyback, kind of a buyback program. So they would buy some, it's called a. We'll just call it, it's a tap credit is what you receive for 27,840 dollars is that a credit would go to the initial 55,000. So first year, that's what we would owe is the 22.
77?
Yes, thank you, 677. And then every year after that, we would pay an additional 20,000. That's why it's into our internal service line. And then what they do after five years, they become expired and they give us a new set of 50 after that five years. So it's really a 10-year or a 10-year program.
So that that is an actual average annual cost then, that 22,677?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
Just for five years and then.
Any other questions? All right, anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Budget presentation for our building maintenance. Facilities Director Joe Olson, good morning, Joe.
Morning, Madam Chair, Board. All right, so. All right, so I'm going to kind of just highlight each one of my budgets and feel free to stop me on anything if you have any questions about any lines here. So really, my budget consists of four different budgets. One budget is the grounds and building budget. That just kind of covers everything on campus and off campus courthouse, LEC, jail, the DMV, government center and storage facility. So that would be the grounds and building budget. And then I have the family service center budget, which is an enterprise fund. And within that budget is two separate budgets of essential services, which is the mailroom and then building managers is in that same budget. So one thing that affects all four of those budgets, you'll see kind of a inconsistency within the salaries of the line. You'll see ups and downs. Two things has happened. One, we did a reorganization and we ended up charging different positions to different areas. So this is what actual, so you'll see that that difference. And then with with custodians, Lori and I sat down and, you know, usually we have kind of a team cleaning approach. Each person has a building, but we kind of move everybody around. But the best, we felt the best way to capture each building's budget is to assign that position to it. So we we made it a point to sit down and do that this year. So that's why you're seeing kind of some ups and downs within the salaries themselves. So right now we have 15 full-time positions with maintenance and custodians and 15 variable hour custodians and two two permanent part-time custodians there. So within the grounds and building budget, I have some new requests in here. One thing to note on the revenue side of the bill, I have added in 16047. And that's just to capture the new transfer station out there. There is some area there that is county only that we need to clean. So I've added in for would be the their enterprise fund to pay this back. So and I have that added in as the expense side too. So it's kind of an in and out thing there. So other than that, some of the new requests, I'm actually, this is the first time I in, well, since I've been here, that I'm asking for a new maintenance worker. And the reason for that is I think we held the held the line pretty well when we added the jail and the LEC and we've done well. I think the minute we we bought the government center and went off campus is when I really start to see the pull on that. So that that is, that's where you'll see that $71,000 increase in there. And then the other thing I'm asking for is we've seen a shortage in in trying to fill the variable hour positions for the custodian. So over the course of the year, we've seen, we've seen, oh, they're just always short because we it seems like we're two two positions down. And so what I'm proposing here is that we take four variable hour positions and we put them together and form two full-time positions. So so I've added in 58,670 and that's just basically the difference in the benefits is what that would be. So so and then a small request down is if we do end up getting approved for a new maintenance worker and put some money in for a to lease another pickup. Right now we have two, right now we have six staff and we have two pickups in a in an Explorer. So we don't feel we need, everybody needs a pickup or anything, but we we are always waiting for for a vehicle at this point. So if we add another one, I think it'd be a good time to to add that fourth truck to the fleet there. So.
Joe, just, Joe, just to go back on that piece, we really were weighing heavily when we opened the new facility law enforcement center.
Yeah, yes.
Correctional facility about adding.
Yes.
And so that's, we've really kind of pushed that four and a half years, doing the best that you you could management-wise. So I appreciate the fact that you did the best with with your staff. Your staff's always so responsive to that. And I appreciate identifying if if maybe there's some inefficiencies in not having an additional. So I completely understand, but I I want the rest of the board that wasn't part of those discussions to know that that's something that we almost had to do, but you said you'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, so those are, those are my just my new requests. Obviously, I'll have a detailed approach with the with the coming to the pick so at some point. So, all right, so as far as as the increases within this courthouse building budget. Natural gas, you heard Carrie talk earlier about that. We've I've gotten some letters from Excel explaining that there may, there will be an increase in that. So and I've seen seen an increase in that. So that's one. And then another increase is the custodial supply. So I'm hearing out there that the supplies are going up. And we've also kind of shifted budgets when we added the LEC. I shifted some money from the from this budget, the courthouse budget down. I shifted money around. I felt like I overshift it. So so the custodial supplies will be going up. And then you heard Carrie earlier talk about warranty. The warranty in both the LEC and the jail are are pretty much up. For an example, we had a blower motor go out in the LEC, which was once covered in $6,000. Now, I mean, just kind of those things can hit us at any time. So I am asking, so what I'm asking is to increase the some of the building repair and maintenance items. And the the other thing we've done is, I guess, better practice on my end when we added building, the jail and the LEC, I had an equipment repair line item added, but not the rest of professional services, the stuff that you see in each building. I had I had one line that I was kind of trying to budget and figure out what it costs. So now with all the warranties going off, I've added a professional service and a line to each one of these. So so we've just added some some extra stuff that otherwise should have probably been in there anyways, but but. So those are some of your increases within the building, the grounds and building budget. Overall, we are at a 13% increase for this one. We did add the government center and we did add. The new storage facility as well. So those have really, I think, attributed to that increase as well. So questions on that budget?
Questions for Joe? Any questions?
So we'll just move on to the family service center budget then. So just a note, you'll see the rent portion side of this is going to be under 65, 805, 5810. And that's under your allocated section. So you're going to see a slight decrease there, but that's probably not going to happen. We we're using the current matrix right now. And with the dental clinic, we've worked out a deal at a discounted rate. So I think that's where you're seeing that little 1% decrease. I'll have, we should have a contract and everything signed prior to the first of the year. So you shouldn't see that, but it is showing a slight decrease there. But as far as miscellaneous revenue, I wanted to note in the family service center budget up here, worked out with James a little bit. We found, we kind of, a couple of years, it seemed like the family service center was getting under charge with some of the maintenance that he was using. So we've worked out a a better deal there. We have an agreement every year. So you're going to see. James's budget pay the service center budget 67,000. That's basically a combination between maintenance workers, some of the natural gas that's used through the boilers and and so forth. So we're, we have agreement in place there. So that's expected there. And then some of the increases within the family service centers, the building repair and maintenance and the equipment repair and maintenance, we haven't increased that line for many years as well. And and that building is aging and we've we just feel that we're kind of seeing that come down. And then also the professional services, we did a slight increase. And then if you know, the building insurance has really went up and that's due to the claims that we have been having. I think Lori and I are going to sit down and look at, look into MCIT and how they're billing us for that and look more into that. But other than that, you're seeing with with the budget itself, at the end, it's showing a $443,000 loss. But but Lori plugs in an depreciation number, I get a little lost on this, but of 365,000. So that's not exactly what it is. But actual cash, when I talk to Lori, we have just over a million dollars to the good. So so that's that's basically it for that. And then within the family service center, there's a building manager and central services mailroom budget. And we haven't really seen major changes in that as well. So. Really all I have, any questions on anything you see?
Thank you. Questions for Joe? Questions yet? All right, well, we'll look forward to the discussion at the pick level regarding that position. Anything else for Joe? Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Next piece is also yours. Are you, are you requesting to move forward with the government center parking lot mill and overlay project?
Yes. So this one, we knew it was kind of an aged parking lot, but we've we really came into issues this winter, actually, when we we had a lot of frozen spots. In the attachment, I had a show some pictures of issues we're having. I think we had a couple of slips and falls last winter. It was very difficult. And then so what I did is I talked with Brian Friedrich and which he's, this is kind of his expertise. And then him and Justin Storm teamed up, took a look at this, this parking lot. First, we thought we'll try to see what a fix would be for these, all these puddles everywhere. They determined their life has already been met in this. And it would much rather than put money into a patched parking lot, we looked at a complete mill and overlay. So I I, what we've done is gotten two quotes here and and we're asking to move forward with a mill and overlay with the low quota $72,000 using FM asphalt. And the fund is actually out of Fund 19, so we have a current balance of 212,000 out of that one. And this has went to the building committee and we felt it was a appropriate project to use out of that fund. Questions?
Board, questions, discussion?
And we discussed this at the build committee and then we approved it there. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Commissioner Gross, second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passes.
All right, thank you for that.
Next item on, oh, did you?
No, you're good.
The next item on the agenda is a request to fill a vacancy for a case aid in our, oh, oh, sorry.
Number five.
Sorry. Request to move forward with the family service center improvement project.
There you go. So, no, you're, so this one also went through the building committee. We had some discussion on this. I guess as one of my duties as building manager, I've I've heard a lot of feedback from the family service center on some issues of updating and requests for updating. I did, I I met with tenants, I met with some county staff over there that do rent the building. Just got some opinions on how do you make this place better and and what are you seeing? And kind of the feedback I got was the main lobby hasn't been updated in many years, a lot of cases since 94. And the meeting rooms are in rough shape and and stuff. So so we looked at an improvement project, what it would cost to go through the whole main lobby area, including the meeting rooms. And you can see, I have a map here highlighted of everything. And our goal would be to replace the ceiling tile, the lights, new ceramic tile and painting. And and some signage all around the place and really just give it a a good update. So when a client comes in or the regular, or the client or public or even staff, that it's it's an updated feel all around on that first floor. So so we've put together a project, we total project cost would be 245, 957. You can see it's kind of a, there's not one contractor doing one thing. We've kind of lined up a whole bunch of different, different contractors to do this. And yeah, and also, as you can see, there's some sign, the sign in the front of the building is in rough shape as well too. So we have a a plan to to replace the sign up in the front that's on the building. And I guess you've seen, there is a sign on the corner too. The building committee and I, I totally agree that it was probably necessary just to remove that on the corner as nobody can see that. So just improving the face of the of the family service center when you walk in is is our goal here. And and questions for me on this?
Questions?
I did a walkthrough with Joe on this and he showed me all, I mean, if you really get down to looking at all the different projects, it does need, it does need repair in a lot of spots. So if you look at the overhead ceiling tiles and stuff like that, they look pretty dirty already.
Yeah.
Time to do something over there and I'll make a motion to move ahead with these projects.
We have a motion offered from Commissioner Gross to accept the proposal.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Further discussion. I don't know if you said it, the STS and corrections programs have offered to perform the painting?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, good, good catch there.
Utilize the savings in that capacity.
Big, big time. So there's, I mean, when you walk through that whole building, including in the the door frames, all the way to the walls, everything, the STS is. And and corrections, both have teamed up and said they're going to paint that whole building for me. They've already started a little bit as well, just down one hallway and they just, they do a good job. And I just really wanted to highlight that because, I mean, you're literally talking 40 grand here if you put a number to that painting, if I were to have hire that done. So I I just really appreciate that. They really made this this project a lot more affordable and they'll get it done quick too, I know. So I appreciate Janelle and and Carrie and Cole, the the that have worked with me on this. So yeah, really wanted to thank them for helping out there.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, just a note to where the money's coming from, we had, we had talked about this. There was a $200,000 line item in the capital improvement bond. Obviously, this exceeds that by the 45,957. But we believe that that still would be able to come from potentially the 248,000 in premium dollars. That was also, we also received in the bonding process. So. So the dollars are there to support this project. And do you want to just touch briefly, because we talked about, a lot of this work is being done on the main floor, correct?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to just talk a little bit about?
Yep, I can do that. Some, so this is the first floor project, improvement project, and we really had a good discussion about. I'm coming back with some more numbers. We do have some extra money, as Commissioner Campbell said, in the premium dollars. And I'm coming back with a second two-pronged approach here where from second all the way up to fifth is to really uniform the tile and the painting going up there too. So when you walk in the building, the main areas, everything would be kind of uniform with new signage and and new lights, new everything. And then, you know, our goal down the line is to start planning for you on the wings as we go through some of those. So so really, yeah, we're we're coming back with another project, I would say, to propose to the building committee.
Yeah, I I think what, I think what we talked about. Yeah, I think what, I think what we talked about there is that, you know, there's a lot of things going on with the first floor. We were kind of hopeful that that can be done by September 1st because of the head start.
Yep.
Moving in. And we wanted all that area done prior to them moving in.
Yep.
And, and it does make sense that we stay kind of uniform, like what was done in this courthouse building as well.
Yes, yeah.
And, you know, so I, so I, we wanted to move forward with the one piece with the idea in mind still that the remaining floors would still, there still needs to be attention given to those as well.
Yes, yep.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Yeah, Joe, I see tables and chairs are listed in here and there's a line for furniture.
Yep.
Had some comments about, it would be really great if the tables and chairs had wheels to facilitate easier moving around. There's so many different meetings in those rooms.
Yes. Yeah, a couple of things there. The chairs and tables that we've quoted out are, as you see behind here, with the white and the, and the wheels. So yes, it's, it's, and my staff, we're trying to work out a program as well. If you use a building, a meeting, we could set it up as well, too. But yeah, there are a lot of times when you just need to move a few tables. The ones that are in there now are tough and they, they drag everywhere. So yeah, we specifically did that because it's worked really well here for setup and stuff. So, so yes, you, if approved, you, or it sounds like it's getting approved, but you'll see that in there. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie?
Thank you, board.
For your work on this.
Yep.
Now, we will move into the discussion regarding a request to fill a vacancy for a case aide in our home and community-based services. We have our social service director, Rhonda Porter, and supervisor, Holly. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. Okay, last Tuesday, I was here and presented our budget, oh, actually, we're doing a replacement first, sorry, instead of new request.
It's okay.
Okay, yes, we have a retirement. After 38 years of a staff person with our agency, she has submitted her notice of retirement. She will be done at the end of August. She is a case aide in our disability services area. And so we are requesting to replace her position as she retires. Holly, do you want to talk a little bit about her tasks?
Sure.
Okay. So she assists the case managers. Turn your mic, I'm going to turn your microphone on, Holly. Thank you.
Thank you. So this position assists our case managers and our men choices assessors in just managing tasks such as preparing for paperwork for men choices assessments, scheduling those appointments, helping the case managers enter screening documents, service agreements for people on disability waivers, filing of documents and so forth. So she is one of two case aides I have doing this work. And between the both of them, they manage over 700 cases with these types of tasks. So they're all delegated tasks by our social workers, our men choices assessors, in helping manage that caseload. She is able to bill for her work. So she's able to capture some revenue through our disability waiver programs to help cover the cost of her position.
So we're looking at a request to approve and backfill.
Overproof.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next piece would be item seven, was a request to approve an additional social worker in the home and community-based services for 23.
All right. Yes, thank you. So this is in follow-up to last Tuesday's board discussion. This item and the following one are the new requests for staff that I had put in the 2023 budget. I've rescheduled those for today so we can have a little bit longer discussion and have the supervisors here to talk a little bit about the needs in those units. So this one is for a social work position in the, our home and community-based services area. And that's, that's Holly's area. And I'll let her talk a little bit about the position. This is a position that does generate revenue based on the caseload. And on average, these caseloads earn between 85 and 95,000. So they do pay for themselves. If you recall, last year, the board did approve an addition, in 2021, the board did approve an addition to this unit, a social work position. And that person started in March. And we took a look at what revenue that position generated from March throughout 2021, and it was around $85,000. So we are keeping tabs of making sure that those positions do generate the revenue that we present to you when we're asking for these positions. So that was very good to see. And again, that was missing a couple of months of revenue. So.
So Rhonda, my question is, based on the caseloads and the incredible demands and revenue generated, why are we only talking about adding one position?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could advocate for additional positions. One of the things that I'm wanting to look at is the impact of remote work on our revenue, making sure that, you know, we don't see an impact. And we've, we're, we're not seeing that as of yet. This is a unit that does work hybrid. So for the most part, a good majority of these staff do work three days remotely and two in the office. Is that right, Holly? How we have?
Yep, about every other week. So 50% remote and 50% in the office.
Yeah. So we're, we're wanting to just, again, make sure that we're earning the revenue that we say that they're going to earn. There are some things that impact revenue in this, in this area. FMLAs, of course, when somebody's out on a FMLA, they're not attending to the caseload and other case managers are having to manage those cases. There's only so many hours in a day. So that does impact our revenue when somebody is out on extended periods of time. Again, it's just a matter of making sure that the revenue continues as we say it is. But definitely, that is our staff's argument, that with caseloads, we want to make sure that if these positions do pay for themselves, couldn't we bring in additional staff?
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Rhonda, the, or Holly, the working from home, the work still qualifies for the, for the reimbursement, right?
Absolutely. And we, we wouldn't, shouldn't anticipate any change in that. But it's always something that we want to make sure that a change in work environment doesn't result in any change in work productivity. So far, we're not seeing that. So we're very pleased with what we're seeing. But it's a piece for us to monitor.
And the, the criteria for determining reimbursable dollars, is this, is this one that happens to be a federal program or a state program?
These are Medicaid waiver dollars. So there's a state and a federal share in, in the, the earnings that the staff have. For the Medicaid waivers, I believe it's mostly state. Is it Holly?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not all of the work on a caseload is reimbursable either. It just depends on the assignment of the workload, because not all of the individuals that are served in Holly's unit are on Medicaid waivers. So some services are claimable and some are not. It just depends on the workload.
So going to Commissioner Mojo's question, so some of the demands might be in areas where they aren't reimbursable.
Correct, correct. Yep. We're showing, so in 2021, our goal was to, if you look at the document that we submitted, our goal was to get that caseload of 71 down with the addition of a staff. But because of the increase in referrals, those caseloads stayed about 71, even with the addition of a staff, because those referrals continued to come in. One of the things in this position that we're trying to do is we just, well, maybe, Holly, do you want to talk about our waiver review and what the state recommendation was?
Yes, I sure can. So this past November in 2021, we had our home and community-based lead agency review. And this is where DHS staff pays a visit. Actually, they did it remotely this year. So they review a select number of waiver cases to ensure that we're meeting the state and federal guidelines for these programs. And some of the recommendations from that review, overall, we did very well. And, and a couple of recommendations that they did have for us were to streamline our, we have a few cases that are contracted out for case management. So to streamline that process for efficiencies and meeting timelines, as well as increasing our work in collaboration with our schools and our employment service providers who are, you know, working with people with disabilities to find meaningful competitive work. So by adding this position, my hope is that we can focus on those areas, maybe focus on some caseloads specific to those areas, or decrease the workload so we can spend a little bit more time and attention in this, this
Make a motion to approve the position.
Second.
Motion to approve the position with, from.
And with backfill.
Commissioner Gross with backfill, a second from Commissioner Kaylee.
No, um, this is a position that I put in the 2023 budget to start in January. So I'm not sure if, I'd love a motion to fill it, but I'm not sure if that's.
Yep, I, I understand. In the memo, it does say for 2023. I do know there's a motion from Commissioner Gross and second from Commissioner Kaylee. Is that, your understanding then that would supersede, I mean, the action of this board to approve the final pieces? Okay. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I think, I think, I think that that would be, it's a step that we normally don't take historically with, within our budget process. And that's because, you know, we often, every department, we can hear about new hires. And, and until we as a board get the full picture, we typically will not deal with a new hire and, and approve that prior to getting all of the budget information in and making a final determination. You know, having said that, if, I mean, if, if this one is, if this one is, if the presentation is that it's going to be fully funded and offset by revenue, there, you know, I, I look at that as a, as a potential difference or where we can, you know, feel safe in doing this. Because then, then it would have, it basically have no impact to any levy that we do.
Right.
I just wanted to bring that up because I, because I, I'm kind of uncomfortable saying, well, I'm going to, I'm going to give social services this new hire today, but everybody else has to wait. And that's, that's the part that I struggle with.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Yeah, Commissioner Campbell, I totally hear what you're saying. And my motion was to go with as presented today. However, if the board would be open to it, there is an immediate need for this position. It does pay for itself. So it is a budget neutral move. So if, if the rest of the board would be open to it, I would be in favor of hiring this position now.
So a clarification, since you did have the second to Commissioner Gross in terms of timeline?
Well, it's going to be up to them when they need to position.
Well, the position is needed now. There's no question. I presented it as within the budget process, just to be respectful of that process. However, would absolutely appreciate if the board felt appropriate to approve it now. We would definitely move forward with it.
Were there additional funds put into the budget to, for this position or?
Or in 2022?
Three.
In 2023, I put the cost in there, which is totally offset by the revenue. So that would hold true if it started in 2022 as well.
Okay.
Steve?
Madam Chair Commissioners, in the event that we do have a motion and a second, so if, if you do wish to change to hiring now, we would have to first vote at the first motion.
Right. I just, okay, so there is a motion and a second to, to approve the request for an additional social worker in the home and community-based services for 2023. I'd like to vote on that piece now. And then if there's an additional motion after, that's fine. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chair.
Just to clarify, that was a unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like my vote to, I'd like it to be recognized that I, I voted in favor of this because it was revenue, or revenue and expenditure neutral.
All right. Madam Chair, I would move that we hire this position now.
So to work in 22, 2022. So there's a motion to go ahead and move up the timeline for advertisement and start on the prior position that we just voted on from Commissioner Kaylee?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? Ms. Porter, I am hopeful that you have the opportunity to hire this as soon as possible and then retain the information in regards to if it continues to generate the revenues you anticipate. If we're seeing that that is the case, I know we're in short term for the 2023 discussion, but certainly would, would entertain the possibility of discussing an additional piece.
Sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight is a request for an additional social worker in, that's, yep, in, for adult mental health for 23. We have Kirsten here. Good morning.
Okay. So yes, this is the second new request I put in for the 2023 budget. This position unfortunately has a caseload that is not, generates the revenue as the home and community-based waiver position. Those positions are more direct, direct claiming and unfortunately, this one is not. But it does not suggest the need is, is any different. In fact, this position is greatly needed within our agency and the work that it does under adult mental health. This is a position that would be supervised under Kirsten and maybe I will let her talk a little bit about the need for the position.
Certainly. So like Rhonda said, unfortunately, this is not a revenue generating position. The services are mandated by the state and the demands are great. So currently, what, what we are looking at as potential needs, this position completes prepetition screening reports and civil commitments for those that are mentally ill and need of treatment. This position also would cover Rule 20s, which are generated by a criminal court and a person is deemed not competent to stand trial. And so then a request for civil commitment is made by the court. Those numbers have increasingly, I'm going to say exploded, for a lack of better word. The demand in that area is right now above what we can keep up with, to be honest with you. I asked Mr. Melton to come and support me in this and he must be in court because he said he would. And he is fully aware of the demands in both the Rule 20s and the just general civil commitment.
And that was, was my question in regards to the Rule 20 piece. Obviously, the courts don't, those rulings don't come with a funding stream. And the county incurs that piece. But certainly based on trends we're hearing, and Mr. Leaser can comment, too, that that's certainly on an uprise in our community.
And I can certainly speak to the Rule 20 piece as well from the county attorney's office. It's certainly, in my eight years of being a prosecutor here in Clay County, I've never seen anything like the Rule 20s that we've seen in the last, I'd say the uptick anecdotally has really come in the last two years. I don't know what, what social services might agree with that. It's, it is exponentially expanded. It's, it is exponentially expanded, and it's, it's difficult, because as Madam Chair just noted, those are sort of unfunded mandates from the courts. They're, of course, doing what they think is best under the statute. The statute is sort of riddled with holes and pitfalls for these folks to fall through these cracks, but the numbers have absolutely exploded. It's unlike anything I've seen in my career.
Rhonda, what, you know, and I know Commissioner Kaylee serves on our mental health committee at the state level, what are you hearing with your state associations in terms of advocating for funding? We do so much advocating for the unfunded mandate portion of what counties are experiencing, and, and I know Clay County is likely not the exception to the rule here, and it's, it's likely a statewide issue. Certainly, we need to take care of those folks, but it seems to come at an exorbitant cost.
Yeah, and the, the issues for advocacy are kind of multi-pronged, and this is information I'll be sharing with Commissioner Kaylee as well, but it's, it's really increased community-based services that can meet the needs of these folks with intense needs. As I said before, one of the issues we're dealing with is when individuals are committed to state-operated programs, there's a county share for those costs, and in some cases, it's, you know, 25% of the daily cost, which in community-based hospitals is about $1,600, $1,700 a day. But once they're there, if they are determined to, at some point in their stay, not need that medical level of care and are being discharged, at that point, until they are actually discharged, the county has 100% cost of the care there. And so from 25 to 100% is pretty substantial, and it adds up very quickly. And the difficulty is, folks sit in those state-operated programs because we're not able to find community-based services that will take them. Their behaviors are still significant, their history is significant, and the community resources aren't available for them to move out quickly, or there's a waitlist for some of those programs that are appropriate. So the, the work that fall on our staff is very intense. They're daily working with state-operated folks to try to find placements, they're making referrals, they're denied, so they're making more referrals. In some situations, we are making, I know in a child, this is, this is for adults, but even this is an issue for children as well that have significant needs. We just have to build community capacity. So advocacy at the state is building community capacity, not shifting the cost to counties in terms of increased cost shares. We're constantly battling that with the state. I think the advocacy is working with them on not shifting that 100% cost to the county, because it isn't that the county staff are not trying to find placements, it's just that they're not there and available. And developing better community resources. So it is absolutely an issue, but these cases just increase the intensity and the intense work that our staff need to provide. So not only are the numbers increasing, but the intensity of the workload is increasing.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Just to kind of reflect on this, we are very much aware of the lack of emergent care and mental health crisis here. The 988 system is a wonderful system if you have somewhere to take people, if you have some people that respond in the field. Those, those, those needs are not being met in this community, particularly in this side of the river where we have no hospital. We don't have a safe place to put people and wait for somebody to respond. They actually need to come out in the field in a short period of time, or as we've seen in the past, it becomes a law enforcement issue again, which precedes a Rule 20, and we end up using our correctional facility, which has a pod designated to help people in mental health crisis, but it's to hold them, not to help them. We have no emergent care here, and that, I can see, shifts an incredible burden on your staff. So I think this is, this is certainly not an answer, but it's to help stanch some of the bleeding that we've got, and allow your staff to function more effectively in the roles that they've been done, and we can continue to lobby and work and try and get the state, not just to come up with great ideas that somebody else has to pay for in a part of the state where there's no staff to provide those services, but to come up with an idea on how we can bring resources here. And again, I would ask that the commission, long-term, we really need to look at what we can do about setting up an emergent mental health facility of some sort, or bringing those skills in. But this request, I certainly think is a reasonable step in helping your staff deal with the load that's being directed at them.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
You know, as you've said, this isn't an income generating position, but it's a state-mandated need, and we don't have enough staff to manage the need, and so we can't say no to this because we're mandated to provide this service. And also, it's incumbent on us to make sure that our staff are not overly burdened with their workload, so I will be supporting this.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I want to follow up on Commissioner Ebinger's comments. I, you know, I, you know, we can be asked as elected people what we think are the major issues that face us as counties right now, and, and certainly in the top two is, is mental health. There's no question that it is. And I agree that we need to, we need to be able to do something locally here to help those who need that help, who have, you know, have those issues, and I don't think it does us any good to send a Clay County resident hundreds of miles away to have treatment, because that's the only place available for them. So I do think that, that we need to work together with the state, and we've had some discussions here already about, you know, what we, what we could do locally in the future. I'm, it is sad to hear that these numbers are going the way they are, as, as our assistant county attorney just mentioned a little bit ago, over the last couple of years. It's a trend that I don't like, and it's a trend that I don't think any of us here like at all, but it's reality, unfortunately, and having the appropriate staff to, to work on finding the best, best available place for them is critical to not only that person, but to those families and to the community. So, yeah, I, this certainly should move on forward and, for strong consideration, because you're asking for this in 2023, and I think it's, it's, should receive strong consideration in that, and I, and I do share with Commissioner Kaylee's thoughts too about, there gets to be a point where we can have some of our, some of our staff being overwhelmed with these, and, and quite honestly, it's, it can't be an easy job to do all by itself. Each one is a significant, might have a significant personal impact on every one of our employees who are doing that work, and so any way that we can help in that regard, I'm going to support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I?
Yes.
Make one more comment. We've been using this term Rule 20, and I realize I probably should have explained a little bit more what that is for the benefit of folks who might not work in criminal law. Rule 20 refers to Rule 20 of the Minnesota Rules of Criminal Procedure. Those are a set of rules that dictate how someone is charged with a crime all the way through trial and even the appeals process. And Rule 20 is a rule that deals obviously with mental health, so if a defense attorney usually, or even if the prosecution or the judge has a, has an idea that maybe a defendant is suffering from some sort of mental illness, they can order a Rule 20 evaluation, and that evaluation sort of has two parts. The one is to make sure that at the time the alleged crime was committed, the person was competent and sane at that time. The one that we normally deal with and that causes a lot of these issues and need for these services is the second part of Rule 20, which deals with whether they are competent presently to assist in their own defense. They have a right to assist their attorneys in their own defense. And if they are deemed to be incompetent to proceed to trial, then these services are oftentimes ordered to help them gain competency so that they can eventually go to trial or enter into the commitment process. So you can imagine if, if these numbers are exploding in this way, it's not only important for them individually, the defendants individually, to receive this help, but also as a matter of community safety and the pursuit of justice. If we can help these people get back to competency, they should be able to have a trial to, to make their defense and to put the state to their strictest burden of proof and/or be brought to justice. So just to make sure that everyone, we've been using this term Rule 20 a lot, and I'm not sure everyone has a, that's a crash course explanation of what Rule 20 is, and I'm happy to answer any more questions about Rule 20 as it is before us today, but I think this has been a really great discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Leaser. Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Do we?
I will move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
From Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Again, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this now, but I'll, I will, I will support it in its normal timeframe, but I, I still think that in fairness to everybody, every other department who brings forward new requests, we should hear them all, or why aren't we then acting on each and every new request immediately? We haven't done that before, so I'm going to vote no on the motion.
That's, that's fair. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
And to clarify, I'm voting in favor, so that's a three to two. Anything else? All right, that passes.
All right, thank you.
Item nine, a request for an approval, approval of amendment number two to Burns and McDonald, a professional consultant firm for our resource recovery facility. Mr. Larson.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you certainly are well aware, we've had many agenda items over the last year on the Resource Recovery Center. It's gone on a little bit longer than what we had hoped. Initially, the contract with Burns and Mack was a time and materials budget that was set to end in 16 months. Right now, we're proposed to finish up in the first week of December, which would take us to 20 months. So before you this morning, you have a, you have a list of, of potential costs that Burns and Mack has put together to get us to the end of that, that project. Initially, when this was brought forward, we were told that they were completely out of money. I did go back and, back to amendment number one and looked at what, what we've provided, and we do have $14,456 remaining in the original, original amendment number one, and so they're estimating the total need of $49,765 to get to the end of the project, minus the $14,456 would be $35,309. In addition, if you turn to the second page, we've had some additional conversations here at board about shifting the road, the semis used to pick up and the trash, our garbage on the west side. We're looking to shift that road further to the west and essentially put it on virgin ground, with the hope that it's not going to be in the area that we've displaced, therefore won't maybe have as much settling issues, or have any settling issues there. And so total request from Burns and Mack, again, is, would be $40,285. Again, I would note that in the list of items provided, a total, that is an estimate, and so it doesn't, that's the maximum that they're asking for, and at this point, it could be less than that, but your agreement today would be for $40,285. That would yield for any questions.
Okay. Board discussion? Well, certainly, Commissioner Campbell and I serve on the solid waste committees, and this is something we've had extensive discussion on. Burns and Mack continues to provide great advice and feedback and analysis on the plans. They're very active and present at all of the meetings. Certainly, we've had our fair share of speed bumps, if you will, on some of those pieces of the, the project, so wanting to make sure that, that we're not leaving that piece unaddressed. But just in regards to the road design change, really, we're hoping to see savings that would probably pay for this final piece of the amendment by shifting that road further west to avoid some of the areas where there is substantial settling that is occurring, not only due to the hauling of additional fill, but the groundwater runoff issues that we've continued to have and have to mitigate monthly. I guess I'll offer a motion to approve this amendment.
Second, that's for the $40,285.
Yes.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Mojo, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you. Item 10 this morning is an update on the solid waste manager position.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, this past Tuesday, the board unanimously voted to approve Mr. Kent Severson to be our next solid waste manager. Wednesday morning, I received information that indicated that Mr. Severson is potentially having second thoughts. We sat down and talked through some of his concerns, many of which I thought we covered during our multiple meetings prior to the offer, but in the end, Mr. Severson felt that he had a lot invested into his current role and was not, was not wanting to walk away from that at this time, and so he, he did on Wednesday revoke his name from, from the solid waste manager to return to his old role. So wanted to make the board aware of that because of the actions that took place last Tuesday. We did have, we do have a couple of applications that came in while we'd started the, the interview process with, with Mr. Severson, and so we'll be taking a look at those this week and reaching out to our hiring committee about their willingness to look at those applications, and if that, if we do not have adequate applications there, qualifications within those applications, we'll look to have to re-advertise again.
Mr. Larson, do we need an action from this board to rescind the offer?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, we do.
Move we rescind the offer to Mr. Severson?
Second. Motion from Commissioner Ebinger, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thanks. Board Committee reports. Commissioner Gross, would you like to start today?
Tuesday, we had a building committee meeting, several of the items we already discussed that are on the agenda today. There's a, over in the family service center, we had some stormwater issue in the north entrance, which is being taken care of, and it's going to be covered by insurance, as far as I understand, so they're already repairing that. We discussed the first floor hallways and stuff, which we voted on today, and also the carpet and paint master plan, which we took care of today. Also, the, we rejoined parking lot over the government service center. We discussed the detox center on the second floor. We're going to hold up any redoing of anything there till we find out what's going to happen to that part of the building. And we also discussed the DMV future planning, what's going to happen with the DMV, and that, we discussed that more on a meeting that I had on, on Wednesday, we discussed that. There's going to be discussion on what's going to happen with the DMV, if, if anything at all, so that's just in the discussion stage right now. So that's just in the discussion stage right now. Thursday, we had restorative justice. I went to Holly, did that meeting, and very good information shared with everybody down there as far as they feel that program is working. I sort of suggested, going back to the old way, that when I went to school, how we handled restorative justice, but I guess I was sort of voted down on that, but no, I think it's a good program, and they're going to keep working on that program there. It was a good meeting, too. Saturday, I participated in the Dilworth Parade, and last night, I tried attending some meetings, but I found out everybody either didn't have a meeting or moved their meetings. So those are my meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 27th of Wednesday, I attended one of those restorative justice meetings as well. It was really wonderful to see the DGF administrative team for the school district. They all attended, and we had a really wonderful conversation about why restorative justice is so needed right now in our schools and how those needs are increasing and how COVID has played into that and the role that the county attorney's office is playing in meeting those needs. This Board did support that work with some ARPA funds. But also just to see the investment from so many different groups in our community in seeing that our kids thrive and that they understand the consequences of their actions and how to take a holistic approach to that process before they end up in front of a judge. So that was a great conversation. Thank you to everyone that participated in that. I really got a lot out of that. Thursday, I attended the CAPLP Board Meeting at their office in Breckenridge. We got a report from Kristin Phillips, the Director of Head Start, and I am always impressed with how that Head Start staff really approaches meeting the needs of the whole family and getting them connected to the services that they need, whether that is transportation or mental health services, financial fitness services. Those were the top three, oh, and housing, were some of the top referrals that they made throughout the last year. One change that they noted is that SNAP is now an automatic qualifier for Head Start programs, so if you are receiving those, that food assistance fund, your family automatically qualifies for Head Start services. So what that means for Head Start is that their waitlist is going to get longer. Currently, they're serving 86 home-based families and 111 center-based students in their program. Kristin also noted that they've been experiencing funding challenges, as many of the funding sources have remained flat over the last few years or decreased. And they also have a requirement for serving children with special needs, and she noted that 20% of the children that they are working with are eligible for special ed services with their public schools. So great report from Head Start. They're doing incredible work, and a testament to that is they also shared that one of the former parents of one of their students is now employed by them. They saw the value of the program and wanted to invest in their community as well, and so join the staff, and I think that's a beautiful story. They are fully staffed for this fall, and so they're looking forward to full classrooms and lots of smiling faces. We also went over the audit at that meeting. It was a clean report with no material weaknesses and attended to some other normal business as well. Yesterday, I attended the Morehead City Planning Commission. We only had one public hearing, and that was for a conditional use permit to start work on building the natural playground, which the Rotary is supporting. I know my kids and I are very much looking forward to playing in that space when it is finished, so that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Going back two weeks here, on Tuesday, the 19th, I attended the Personal Issues Committee Meeting, which the items that we talked about then were brought up today, so I won't go into that anymore. We also, that day, I also had a diversion authority executive meeting. Items that were discussed were some land settlement updates, processes going in place. There was a follow-up to our Board Retreat that basically is going to establish the new governance of the diversion authority and receive some groundbreaking updates that are going to be happening on August 9th. Then on the 20th, we did have a solid waste budget meeting, and I believe that Commissioner Mojo had reported on that, so I won't add any more to that. On the 21st, we had a West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting, and I know that Commissioner Ebinger reported on that. I do want to note that we did approve the 2023 budget. The only piece that we were not able to include into that was any final COLA that is determined to be by the County Board, so that, there was nothing in there for that part of it yet, so. And there was some discussion, I know Commissioner Ebinger did bring this up, I was listening in on the meeting, and there was some, there is some concern about the two-year lookback, and unfortunately, under the way it works right now, we have kind of a county who's a major player in this, and the way the formula works, they won't be paying anything for 2023, and I'm a little concerned about any big county not having to pay any portion of that. So it's a process that we're going to have to review, that it's something that we never had anticipated under the formula. Then on the 25th, we had an insurance committee meeting, and I believe Commissioner Kaylee had reported on that. The one thing that I do want to add, that I, there was, I don't think there was any discussion on, but it's an important topic for us to have here, and because we were looking at the, well, I think you may, maybe it was mentioned briefly, but we're looking at, potentially by 2025, when our guaranteed contracts are up with Blue Cross Blue Shield, that there's a strong possibility that might be in our best interest to go into a self-funding. I think our consultants are looking at that. Just for an example, in 2023 now, we are going to be at, is it eight percent?
Seven.
Seven, it goes seven, eight, and nine, yeah. So had we not had that three-year contract, our insurance increase based on the current process that would have been used, we would have seen an increase of 33%. And there's no, and some of those, there's no indication that those numbers would drop significantly in 2024, and so it's, I think it's extremely important for us as a Board to be looking out into the future on this and to be ready for self-funding. And the self-funding, I think, will be advantageous for the county and our employees as well. The concern that I have is that year when we would go into that, is that then we would, the county wouldn't have a pool of money established for the early claims that come in, and it's extremely important that we prepare for that and have funds set aside. And I think the numbers that they're looking at, I think they talked about having 30% of the claims, I think, is that, Steve, is that correct? 30% of the claims that we should have available on hand, and so we're probably looking at 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars that we'd have to potentially pay out before the premiums come in for those early claims from a January, February, March standpoint. So I, you know, I think we're going to have to be looking at including funds within our levy process that starts to establish this. In the long run, when you think about us going from, had we not had this deal for 2023, had we been at 33% and 7%, the numbers that we're talking about in terms of putting away, it only makes sense to prepare for the inevitable. And, you know, so I'm bringing that up today because I think it's something that we're going to have to include in our budget discussions before the preliminary levy is set, because if we don't start this now and if we wait till 2025 or 2026, the amount of money that we would have to upfront would be significant. And so we've had those conversations. Lori's been involved, and I think she's going to put something in, in the discussion for the budget. Then on the 22nd, we had a Prairie Lakes Budget Meeting. What was determined in that budget meeting is the plant feels that they can go from 54,000 tons to 55,000 tons, which means each county would be responsible for, well, for example, Clay County would be responsible for another 150 tons delivered during the course of the year. The good news in that process is, you know, we had $180,000 savings in the bond payments annually from the refinancing that we did, and what boils down to is, all things considered, there'd be a 0.7% increase in the tipping fee for 2023 versus 2022. And so that Clay County's, Clay County's share, based on that and the increased tonnage that we'd have to do, Clay County's share would, for 2023, would be $312,336. As a comparison, the financial commitment that we had for 2022 was 306,000, so it's up about $6,000, $6,200 for the year 2023, which is, it's a smallest increase that facility has had annually in a long time. The tipping fee basically stayed, you know, I think it's just under $130. And then we had another PIC meeting on the 22nd, and we had some discussions about a request for new maintenance worker in highway. We had some discussions with the sheriff about deputy recruitment, and we had some discussion about juvenile detention, decreasing some variable hours in the non-secure and potentially adding two new full-time positions in that area. And on the 26th, we had our Building Improvement Committee Meeting. We, there's a stormwater issue on the north entrance that has to be dealt with. It's very similar to some of the issues that we had that was by the entrance, that extension a couple of years ago, so that's in the process. Is it being fixed or has it been fixed or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, it has been fixed.
Okay, thank you. And then we had a discussion about the first four hallways and painting and all that, which we did approve today, along with the mill and overlay at the, or at the Government Center. And on Wednesday, the 27th, we did actually have the Prairie Lakes Board Meeting, which did approve the budget that was recommended by the Budget Committee. We had some significant discussions about PIFAs or PFAS issues as it relates to costs to counties and Prairie Lakes and looking at making sure that the state is aware that the studies that they want to do or the, they want us, they want us to do some testing. Thank you for, at the, both at the landfill and at Prairie Lakes, and in each of those, in each instance, those testing for each facility is about $50,000 annually, and again, it comes with no funding from the state, but they're recommending voluntary work on our behalf, and so I think it's very important for anybody who, and even to get AMC involved that, once again, we have a solid waste management tax that's collected, and the counties get about 25% of the total solid waste management tax, going back to landfills and that type of thing, and we've talked about this before, we need to have that changed instead of it going to the general fund, and now they're coming back, and they're making this voluntary right now, but that could turn to a mandate, and then again, we don't even know, once they determine what they come out of this testing, then what does it become for cost to clean up? The 28th, we had a solid waste advisory committee meeting, and we got updates. There was an approval for the City of Felton for a building, I believe it was up to $25,000 that would come out of our recycling budget for 2022, to have them build a building to, so that city has its ability to have appropriate recycling services. On the 28th, we also had a MCC JPA meeting. We got some updates on, property status updates, organic farmland update, and we approved four different master services agreements. And let's see, we had some discussion regarding hunting in public recreation access for lands that are owned by the MCC JPA. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Wednesday, the 27th, I also attended the School-Based Restorative Justice Practices Meeting sponsored by the County Attorney's Office. County Attorney Melton and Assistant County Attorney Leeser were there. Officer Heidi from Morehead PD, School Resource Officer, and Louis Ochoa, the juvenile coordinating official with Morehead PD were there, and the Superintendent, both principals and the vice principal from DGF schools were in attendance. We had a great conversation, as Commissioner Kaylee indicated. I was really impressed with the staff from DGF. I've never had a whole lot of opportunity to meet or work with those folks, and they just were candid. They were great at identifying challenges. We may have an implementing restorative justice on a regular basis, but they were also enthusiastic about it, and I left feeling very encouraged that this is going to be something that's going to get a fair shot, and it's something the schools need, a lot of issues in schools right now. Later that day, I attended the Metro Flood Divergent Finance Committee virtually. Fairly short meeting. We did cover the sales tax from Fargo was above projection. They discussed viewing property that's not in the footprint of the diversion itself that's currently owned by the diversion authority, about 45 million worth of property. At this point, they don't want to classify that as an asset, because as long as land negotiations going on, this property has potential to be used in trades for land within the footprint, so had a brief conversation on that. So, had a brief conversation on that. The audit by Bailey is complete. There were no major issues of concern, but it's going to be presented to the full board in August. The next day, Thursday, I attended the Metro Flood Diversion Board meeting. It was somewhat uneventful as well. They covered property settlements that we've got, with 42% of the property owners. They've acquired 701 land acquisitions for 29 parcels, and 14 are currently in eminent domain. We did pass a, an engineering agreement with BNSF, where they are going to hire one employee strictly to deal with the diversion authority. It'll be paid for by the diversion authority, but this employee will give, really break down the bureaucracy that you run into in dealing with BNSF. And that completes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Evinger. Last week, I also attended the PIC committee meeting, where we discuss staffing and variable hour discussion regarding the Juvenile Detention Center. We had a discussion regarding the request for a maintenance worker at Highway, and then had further discussion about staffing at the sheriff's office and recruiting tactics for our departments. Commissioner Campbell gave a good update on the Prairie Lakes meeting that I attended as well. I attended the Restorative Justice Community Discussions in Holly. I have to agree with the other three commissioners that had attended those discussions, great input from vital community members. At this particular one, we had school board members represented from Barnesville and Holly, and Chief of Police of Glendon and Barnesville, and resource officers from several different school, school, schools. And the buy-in is there, and a lot of the discussion, there are members in the community that are, that are doing the work. It's piecing it together to make it as fluid and to give the supports to what's existing, as most support to what's existing. Also, at those meetings were school board, or resource officers from Morehead, but also the new principals that have come on board there. So, so really, a great snapshot of, of so much buy-in, and hopeful that we can address some of the, the major issues that we're seeing with kids. And certainly, I think COVID has ramped up the deviance that we're experiencing, and this is an opportunity to give kids a second chance and to not maybe throw the book at kids that have just made a mistake, that, that really are, are good and need people to buy in and believe in them. And I'm hopeful that, that it's a worthwhile endeavor. I know that it will be. Had a discussion with ROARs in regards to community development. I also attended the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, where we did have good updates from construction engineers and Comstock, and also had the discussion with Felton. Just to further on that, we did have that discussion several months ago and had staff go back and look. And, and early on, all of the cities within Clay County had had some sort of finance transfer from the county to make sure and either build or, or have an area for recycling Felton, for whatever reason, was not part of that early on. So that's why it did make sense to make sure that we worked with them to get that built on that piece. It is a scaled-down version due to supply costs and availability. I attended the MCC JPA meeting, as Commissioner Campbell did discuss. We did have discussion in regards to, we approved a weed spraying and haying agreement for a parcel that is currently owned by the diversion authority. Did talk about maintenance and spraying maintenance and making sure we're working with the, the construction partners to coll, or coordinate in terms of making sure that's mitigated. I know that's really a nuisance for some of those existing farmers if we're not doing our due diligence on maintenance there. And did talk about further timelines in, in addition to those master service agreements that had been approved. I also attended the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Meeting that was reported on. We did have the audit committee meet with our auditor, and then were able to have an update from the audit there. No major findings, it continued to be in strong financial reporting standing there. And then yesterday, I attended the Metro COG Executive Committee meeting, where we did discuss the policy board bylaws. We had had an attorney review in terms of getting more guidance about adding a transit representative on the policy board. Those, that individual must represent the interests broadly, certainly from Hector's, Airport Authority, most, now that we're transferring into a TMA, that's important to have a major airport representative on that board. So, really, a long discussion in terms of what was the most appropriate approach regarding that representation, and making sure that the state of Minnesota and North Dakota representatives are, are part of that board in a full boarding or ex officio position. So that, we did refer that to the full board for discussion. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 26th, I attended the PIC meeting that's been addressed in detail. 26th, also participated in the Building Committee that's been addressed. I would note that Commissioner Campbell's discussion on the piping issue, I mean, that, one of the things as a board we'll have to consider in the future, and I know we've talked about it, is those, those pipes are all throughout the Family Service Center. And so we're going to continue to see failures moving forward, and, and so I'll continue to work on with the Building Committee of how to best, best address that. 26th, I participated also in the law enforcement budget planning that you heard this morning. 27th, we had accounting management focused on our budget. We had technology updates, and also, again, just can't stress this enough, as we move from further to WEX for HSA, VIBAs, other fundings, daycares, medications, that we're, we're approaching that dead time here by August 22nd. So we want our, our employees to make sure that they're aware so they can plan. 27th, participated in the downtown Morehead Development Discussion. That will have something before that board later, this, this full board later this month. On Thursday and Friday, I participated in the County Association for County Administrators' Technical Days. We had presentations from different counties related to ARPA opioid lawsuit funding and also local prevention aid. We also notified, we had a, we had a cybersecurity session, talked about some of the challenges that counties are facing. We were also notified at that meeting that MCIT is currently receiving its cybersecurity coverage from Hartford Steam Boiler. They were notified that they're no longer going to be providing that service after January 1st of next year. So MCIT is going to continue to look into different options, what they've indicated that with cybersecurity, the pool plans are very hard to, they're very expensive and hard-to-find companies that, that are able to provide that coverage. And so they've, they also encouraged us to look at our own individual coverage. And so I've already talked with Rory Schmitz, and he's begun to start that process. We also talked about election process, processes, and again, dispelling some of the misinformation on the election, election process. We heard from Crow Wing and Oka and Rice County. And that afternoon, or morning, the next morning, we had a strategic management for MAC as an association. I got insight, insight from the different administrators, which plan will hopefully be finalized in our October annual conference. And then that afternoon or late morning, I participated in with administrators from McLeod and Jackson. We talked about our commissioner onboarding, the process that all of us go through. Yesterday, participated or met with a construction firm interested in learning more about our detox project. Just a couple of updates, we have a vaccine clinic on the 3rd, Moderna and Pfizer, again, 9:15 to 4:00 p.m. with a little lunch break. More information on that, you can go to our webpage. And then each year, by August 1st, the state is mandated to provide us what our CPA payment for the upcoming year is going to be. For Clay County, we're going to be receiving $4,093,206, which is an increase of $157,476 from 2022. Again, a little bit disappointing, because the legislature had about another additional $30 million in the tax bill had that gotten approved. But fortunately, we know how that ended. Also, just a, just an update as part of that, we also received our aquatic invasive species or parion aid. Neither of that changed for, for next year. We also, next year, we are going to be getting an additional funding source through, through, that will be targeted towards social services for dealing with homeless youth. And so we were notified that we'll be receiving $223,000 roughly. And so that's one of the things that Ron and her staff have been meeting and working on, and how to best utilize those dollars moving forward. So with that, concludes my report.
Thank you. Steve? Mr. Leeser, do you have anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen? All right, just also looking forward on the schedule, we do have, in addition to the board meeting next week, there is a groundbreaking for the diversion authority at 11:00 afterwards. Anything else? We are adjourned.